Okay, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Got a little embroiled in my reading here.
Yeah.
You were throwing.
Yes. Okay. Review and approve the agenda. The only addition or change will be the Paul Carrocchio from the new Vermont Marble is on his way and should be pulling in momentarily. So any other changes or additions?
I might come up with an approval with the addition of Paul Carrocchio.
All those in favor?
Right.
I will try Rick Brigger one more time.
Yeah, okay.
You'll have to pull services out.
God, they're just not going to leave this alone.
We're sorry, your call cannot be received at Donald. Please check the number if Donald is not answering. Call your operator to help you.
Can you call him on your cell? Or can you just call him and have him call in? Maybe that'll work.
If he could, if he could call in, yeah, from his cellphone, it probably would work.
Or his landline maybe, but just have him call us instead of us trying to call out, maybe that'd work.
All the calls that I received in home and picture, either by landline or cellphone, all went directly to Boy Smith.
Yes.
Really?
Yeah. He didn't ring the phone.
Yeah.
Those are not working in town.
Yeah, with.
With landlines.
Yeah, with Tom Guest.
Okay, their bill.
They take the whole town.
I look for a credit on the bill for one day at church.
They don't give us any breaks.
Well, the interesting part, when you call, they say it's only business accounts, but it's obviously not.
Right. Is this through Xfinity?
No, Comcast.
Right. Right, Xfinity, Comcast, whatever they call it, same. X-Force.
Sorry.
Four five nine.
Casinity.
Three 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 three, extension one three.
That means I have no air, like, good. It's all quiet.
Yeah, do it right now. If we, if we don't hit it, whoever does. Okay, right.
Huh?
Please be.
Yes.
I don't know why this on. Probably.
Before it was ringing, but then when you picked it up, it just like, boop boop.
Yeah. If you call in, if he calls in from his cellphone, it'll work.
Oh, really?
Yes, because that's what Paul did when he called us. Well, there it goes.
Hello? We got you, Rick?
Is it, is it working?
Yeah, we're good.
Good.
Okay, so there you are, Bruce.
Yes. Good evening. Finally, we got the connections going here.
I'm glad we got the phone systems going.
Yes, yes, and we'll get this out of the taking care of tonight. And I think, while you were talking with Stan on his cellphone earlier, I think one of our main questions is how much time is going to be involved as a board to, with your assistance, to get this thing taken care of?
I guess what I would answer that is that I think it'll be very, fairly minimal. I think some of the board time, you know, whether it's, you know, I guess if I was making a suggestion, it might be that one board member kind of attend like a roundtable discussion with the rest of the town staff, whether it's the highway person, treasurer, Stan, myself, anybody else that we think it's appropriate to be in the meeting to kind of sit around and discuss potential issues, areas of concern, things that might need buttoning up. So I'm thinking like a roundtable meeting of that could somewhere be like a couple of hours, maybe like, maybe even less, depending on, you know, the things that are brought up or things that need to be further investigation. But I don't think it needs to have to be the full board to be involved, other than maybe looking at the final, like documentation of the fraud risk assessment and saying, okay, the fraud risk assessment ideas and concepts and concern areas, this is how we're going to address them, and maybe go viewing that at a board meeting and saying, yep, we blessed that, that makes sense, and we're good with the fraud assessment that's coming out. The whole goal of the fraud risk assessment is just to have everybody have a global understanding that fraud's out there, that try to be aware of it, and to try to look for areas within the accounting structure, within the environment, that could be, where fraud could be occurring in, or could occur in the future, and try to plug some of those holes.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we're, of course, we're on PEG TV, they're here recording, so I neglected to mention your name, and this is Rick Brigham from Sullivan and Powers talking about our fraud risk assessment problems.
Yeah.
Concerns when they did the audit, and this has been a, something that's been on the list for a while, and we'd like to get it off the list. So, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Now, anyone on the board, do you have a question, Judy, on?
Just the matrix that you attached.
What's that?
Does the ma, you gave us a matrix? Is that from him?
Yes.
Okay, you gave us a matrix?
I think I probably gave Stan a sample matrix of things to look at, of things that, like a potential what a fraud risk assessment might look like, but that's just one sample. I mean, I've had places that just do kind of control questionnaires, I've had places do a matrix, I've had places do just narratives.
Right.
Questionnaires, so it could be a variety of forms.
Right, so it's kind of a guideline, because I was just curious if you actually had one that was kind of geared towards a municipality.
Well, I probably, I could probably dig something out like a four map, but I'll be honest, I think the four map would be very similar to what I gave Stan, it just would be a little bit more tailored to a municipality, and it still wouldn't be dealing with, hey, where is cash received, what kind of, you know, where is food and green received in the town, where are there potential, you know, credit card issues, where are their fuel pumps, things like that. It would, it would take the same matrix that you have.
Right.
And just identify areas within the town that need to be identified.
Okay, and some of these things that are on this one could actually be crossed out, probably, and just even something else added in that might pertain to us better.
Yeah, quite.
Okay.
Tom, have you got any?
No, I don't have any questions.
No questions.
Nothing from Carrie, so, well, have you got anything extra, Stan?
I'm going to stay out of it because I'm the subject of the conversation.
Oh.
I don't want to influence anybody one way or the other.
Sure.
So basically, the next step would be to schedule a roundtable, correct?
Yeah, we, what will we do? My, my goal would be to kind of have a roundtable discussion with anybody you want involved, and then I would kind of help lead it, just because I've done one in the past, and I can kind of give you ideas of where we've seen issues and concerns, and then from that, we can investigate further areas that might need more discussion, or might need more like ideas of where things could get plugged, or holes get plugged, or controls get put in place, and so then we get from that to a final report and say, okay, these are the areas we thought are where our risk, and here's how we dealt with them. And then the board would take a look at that, bless that, and I think, then just kind of monitor it as the years go forward as part of the control process, so.
Okay.
Sure. So, no, I think, why don't we have Stan try to coordinate with our schedules and with you, and move forward on this?
That sounds great. Like I said, I'll be as involved or not involved as you want me to be, and, you know, my goal would be to keep the cost down, and just have you guys, you know, do, deal with a lot of it, but I'll be there as much as you need me.
That sounds great, so, Rick? Yes.
You're looking at a roundtable. Is that all of the town employees?
I think.
Contractors, plus one or two members of the board?
It would probably be most of town employees, or a lot of the ones that would be dealing with any sort of transactions that could, whether, you know, if they deal with credit cards, if they deal with cash, if they deal with, you know, any sort of approving of bills, invoices. Again, a lot of times, they may not have necessarily input or things to share, but sometimes they do. So the more, the more people at the table, the more ideas that get shared, and the more vital information that gets shared, and people get a lot more ideas out of it. So it's really up to you who you want involved, but that's what I usually try to share, as, have as many people involved as possible.
Sure. I guess the question is, how many select board members would be involved in the roundtable?
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
He wants to know how many select board members should be involved in the roundtable.
Well, like I said at the beginning, I think you could do them all, but I, my goal, or my, if I was giving a thought process, it would be to identify one member who has financial, you know, is pretty financially capable, to understand the dynamics of controls, processes, procedures, maybe identify that person as a go-to on this, and somebody, that person goes to the roundtables and can kind of guide Stan through the process with me, and kind of work with the, with the team to get this thing done. And then the board could get a final, look at the final report, and, and pick a, you know, any steps that need to happen.
So, you know.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that sounds like a, a plan, and if more members want to show up, that's not a problem either, so.
Absolutely agree.
Yeah, so let's talk about this, and then we'll get back in touch with you, maybe later this week, and try to set something up.
That's perfect. Thanks for giving the opportunity to chat, and if you need anything else, let me know.
Okay, thank you very much, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Have a good night.
Okay, and we have some members from the new Vermont Marble Company to chat on a, regarding the letter that was on the, on the table tonight. So, Paul, do you want to kind of go through your letter and ideas, and we're here to listen and come up with some, maybe some questions, and for you and ourselves. So, maybe the best thing, if you use this
Sure.
podium here, the microphone picks up better for recordings, and that'd be great.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Oh. Loser boys. I have six pairs of them.
Why am I doing? How strong are they?
3.25.
I'm at half, just last week. Thanks, everyone. My name is Paul Caroccio. I'm joined by Mark Kovach. We're owner, part of the ownership group of the Vermont Marble Company here in Proctor. I, I have been in touch with Stan over the past year, or nine months, along with one of our other partners, Keith Knapp, who's been at some of your meetings.
Yeah.
We, we've been having weekly conference calls on Thursdays at four, four o'clock, or Wednesdays, where we discuss ideas and who we've networked with, and prospects dealing with the state about opportunities to re-energize the marble building, the office building. We've also been now, in the, I guess the last two months, involved in discussions with Neil Lunderville at the Vermont Preservation Trust in regards to the marble museum, and what their intended use of their space and the, the greater mill property. So, we've reached out to a lot of folks. One of the ideas that we continue to come back to is, the building is generally too big for any one company to take on, and while we've met with a lot of prospects in the country to look at it for different things, whether it's for the, the permit that we received two months ago for the hemp industry, which is still not out of question, most businesses have said, we don't need that amount of space. So lately, we've been coming back to the idea, which Stan and I talked about a few months ago, which was, could the first floor be utilized by the town of Proctor for a town hall, and a meeting space for town meetings and these types of meetings, and become the town an owner of the first floor through condo minimizing the building or a cooperative, and then it would be managed by a condo association, then the other floors potentially owned and rented, or owned and operated by other companies. We went through that discussion with Neil Lunderville about moving the marble museum into the building, so that it has a four-season home, and more economic for them. Right now, they have very large expenses. They're concerned about the rail speed coming through near the museum, and, and maybe leaving the exhibit hall as is, but maybe making a smaller exhibit hall here, that's four seasons for the schoolchildren to come to and visit. So they would be interested in possibly a floor, and then one of our partners, Keith Knapp, who I mentioned, is interested in putting his business maybe on the fourth floor, and then we have another person interested in putting a commercial bakery on the, on the ground level, half of the ground level floor. Leaving the first, and I should say ground level is the ground ground level, then the first level is the one I'm speaking to for the town. So we wanted to, I called Stan, he said, there's a meeting tonight, and we said, could we re, redevelop the discussion, I don't know if it has any merit, with your group or the town, about exploring the ideas of making the 7,000 square foot first floor a town-owned property, and committing, us committing to you to make it available, as well as committing to getting the rest of the building in shape, and then potentially saving the town some money in your fit-up costs. We have, I think, Stan, we visited a couple of months ago, where the first floor has handicap accessible rooms, it has a walk-in vault, it has, the building has an elevator that is in, is working, and has a few things that needs to be done to it, but it works fine. And it's also on a level with the 35 parking spots in the back that could have a ramp into the first floor, and we even think a door could be probably put in on the parking lot end to just bring a doorway in at that level. So we're just really here to, to open the idea again. We've never been here to a select board meeting to talk about it. We don't know the dollar amount savings, whether it's continued operation savings, or upfront renovation cost savings. We know that, from what's been in the public, that there's a plan, and it's coming up very soon, and bonded to renovate this building. On a magnitude of scale, this building is a, maybe a couple thousand feet, whereas that space would be three times that if you wanted it. And it's a modular construction, so that you could actually open up a large portion of a floor to make it a meeting room, and potentially hold town meeting there, hold community meetings, hold these meetings. So, I'm just here to really say what I just said, and then see if there's a response from the select board that makes it worthwhile, us continuing to go down that path to see if it makes any sense. We have, since meeting with Stan, because we talked about the temporary use of the first floor, or a portion of it, we've met with the fire and safety folks, all the code compliance entities in the state, to allow the town to occupy the first floor, and what would be needed to get it basically to in shape, and I confirmed this today with our team, Tom Moon and Keith and Mark. It's approximately $115,000 to just modify the space and get the alarm systems, the elevator in compliance, handicap ramp. So, when the tat, when Stan had approached us, or we approached him about the space, the rent amount of, say, $9,000 for six months didn't really get us excited when we learned that the cost to get the space in shape was about $115,000. So it immediately jumped us back to, well, well, maybe we should see if the town wants to actually move in permanently, and have a larger space with, and you're more than welcome to take a tour, I'm sure many of you have been in the building. So we're willing to share this with you, so you have it for your record, just to know. But that's, that's why I'm here tonight. And you can say no.
No, no, I was joking.
No, I think maybe this is, of course, this is, would affect our, we were going out shortly on the renovations here, so.
We actually looked at it before, because, not when I, I was on the select board, but I worked for the college.
Mm-hmm.
So when the college had the buildings, we went through them a lot, both of them, and we actually came up with a plan to lease part of this building here to the town for their town offices.
Mm-hmm.
So, we spent enormous amount on our architect and the design and stuff, and then when that plan fell through, but I think we actually, the one up there was actually a decent idea. You know, this one was more compartmentalized.
Right.
Like smaller offices, and pieces, and stairs, and so that, and that's, you know, one, like the big one level, would, would have been nice, but it does need some TLC.
Mm-hmm.
So, and there's a lot you can't do because it's historical.
We've researched that. Primarily, the historical groups have said they want to preserve one room, the conference room, on the third floor, and then just make sure that the facade, the outside facade is preserved with its look. We could even go to the extent to replace all the windows, but as, they would want us to make sure that they have a similar look. So all the interior can be completely renovated or removed, except for the one conference room. We don't intend to do that, but it, we've confirmed, the only reason, the only way where the historic preservation, or historic, national historic registry really comes into play, is if we want to raise historic tax credit money to do renovations. And if we do that, then they come in and they say, well, we think you should keep that piece of trim, or that piece of floor. It's only when you're in exchange, exchanging federal monies that start to impose those restrictions, which we're fine doing too. I mean, there's, there's quite a bit of funds out there available for things like that, and the building itself is, I mean, it's in pretty good, it's not modern, but it's in pretty good shape.
That's probably why they had so much trouble, because I think they were, we were going through the USDA.
USDA would cause some problems, yeah.
Yeah, it caused a lot of problems.
We're in a position where we don't necessarily need to use government financing, but we would take advantage, I mean, as, particularly with the town involved, with the downtown village district programs that the state's put out. A lot of it, the benefits are related to permitting, that you can fast-track permitting processes with the state, not necessarily the town, by, by doing certain things, mixed-use developments or redevelopments of existing property allow you to kind of fast-track Act 250 permitting. So, but that's in the details.
With this 115, that would include the bathrooms, because?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
First, it's interesting that the first floor does not have bathrooms. Ground floor does, the second and third have bathrooms, but the first floor, so that includes ADA compliant bathrooms as well. And, you know, the scale of, that's one floor, so Mark and I've talked about it, doesn't mean the whole building is 400, 500,000 dollars. It probably does, but when you have these other groups participating and taking a share of the costs, it spreads it out, and all of a sudden, the building's alive and renovated. So.
Now, do you have any idea what, well, you did say you figured it out, if we wanted to just temporarily use it, that's still going to be a sizable amount that's going to be invested.
Right.
In bathrooms, and some little things in the entranceway. Does that mean that the sidewalk from the parking lot has got to be, that's got to be, what, does it have to be this five-foot-wide sidewalk?
No.
Entranceway from the Pine Street parking lot to the, to the side door?
Not that we understand. What we do need to put in is a, actually a ramp system, oh, there's a, there's a diagram in this, and we'll leave this with Stan, but it's a ramp system that gets into the building. And just because there's steps at the very front, if you were looking at the, at the main, the side entrance, which has the columns, this is the path in, there's a ramp system that would come into the side.
Right, yeah.
So, that system alone was in the $8,000 range, $8,400. So, when Stan said, hey, we'll pay you $1,500 a month rent for six months, we were buying a ramp for the rent.
Yeah.
So we said, well, all right, what are we doing here? And then the, the list goes on, so.
So are all these repairs you're talking about, like the 115,000, is that our expense?
Oh, what, what it brought to light for us was, if it's 115,000 to get this floor in good shape, or, you know, a large portion of it, well, why don't we just permanent, and when we're looking at the 300 or 400,000 dollars here, why don't we bring up the discussion again of, that's the cost to get that floor ready for the town hall, and it could be temporary, it could be permanent. As far as we're concerned, it's a permanent fix to that floor. So, even if you spent another $50,000 of your own bonded money, and we go out and get grants to try and reduce that, it's a significant cost savings for the town, and an improvement to that building. Now, I don't know what you do with this building, but I don't, those are some of the questions that I think are worthy of asking. So.
Does 115,000 rewire the building, rewire the floor?
So the, the nice part about the building up there is it's all modern, within.
It's all modern too?
No, 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 it's, it's some of the most.
In the hall, it's not modern too?
Uh, no, no. No, it's actually, that was a surprising find when we, when we bought the building. Do you, are you referring to the ceiling lights?
Mm-hmm.
Those could be rewired on the surface, pretty easily.
Do you know how big the vault is that you're talking about?
The actual size of it? So on the, on that main first floor.
Might need to do this. Just keep them far away.
No, here we go. It's one inch, one eighth inches, one foot. I would say it's probably something on the order of, watch me vault, hang on a second.
One vault's in the hallway.
Yeah.
One's on a different floor, isn't it?
The hall doesn't have a door on the other end.
Here we go. The, the level, we're calling it, okay, and this floor, the plan is called level two, but there is a vault, and then a vault, another vault, vault closet and a vault. I'd say it's somewhere on the order of 16 feet by 10 feet. Yeah, 16 by 10. The dimensions are on the end.
I remember, I think it's definitely bigger than the one here.
What is that?
Just that is way bigger than the one here. I know, I don't know what it's.
I think.
I do remember.
But the one downstairs can't be more than 10 or 12 feet square.
Right, that one's, yeah.
Yeah, this one down here is.
Very small.
Really.
I think it, there's a floor, how good yours? It's right, the vaults are all stacked on each other, so they're the same size. It's that number.
14 feet.
And then, yeah, it's going to be two-thirds of that, so about 10. 14 by 10. On the, on that level.
14 by 10.
Oh, a magnifying glass. That particular floor has a vault inside the vault, and then a vault. That particular floor has a vault inside the vault and then a vault, a safe inside the second vault. I don't know if the safe, the safe is still there.
Has on the next floor. If we're on the first floor, that, the safe inside the safe isn't on the first floor.
It's on the second floor.
Yeah.
Well, they.
Are we looking at the first floor or the seventh?
We have on plans, they're called lower floor and then first floor, second floor and third floor of the building. So we're on, the way the plans read.
So if we walk into the building, are we talking about the floor we're walking into or we're going up the level?
So you're talking about the level going in this side, not, not Main Street side, but?
So the main level, it would be like the lobby.
The lobby level, the lobby.
Yeah, so the vault inside the vault isn't on that floor.
If you walk straight through, come around the turn, it is right there.
I think so.
Happy to go look at it, but.
Well, that vault isn't, that's no substantial addition for us than the vault's current vault here, because that vault isn't that much bigger, so, why would we need a vault that has a door like that?
And what is your name?
Lisa Marison.
And you're a resident?
I am.
Okay.
Could we get a tour sometime?
Anytime, sure.
We need a tour.
I haven't been up there, I don't know.
Yeah, it's been a while since.
Lights work, the heat works, doors work, bathrooms work. We've spent a couple hundred thousand dollars in the past year just to keep it up.
Yes.
Pay the taxes, pay the sewer bill, which.
Which got reduced.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I just wish we didn't go through the expense of all the signs up here. You know, once we start getting architects involved and everything shoots up, sky rockets and.
Yeah.
But also, I personally wouldn't want to go up there temporarily. I would either want to go up there completely or not at all.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and the renovations that we're getting here aren't everything that we needed to renovate.
Right.
So there's that piece to it.
And if we do renovate here, we have to go somewhere.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're going to have to.
Could Stan email you sometime and see if we can work out a schedule?
Sure, sure, and we can, yeah, absolutely. And I'll leave it at that, that you may want to go look or talk and see.
Yeah.
Sorry to throw it at you so late in the game, but we know with construction costs that they'll probably go up, not down, as you go forward with projects. And the benefit up there, we think, is that there's a, if we have multiple entities working towards a common goal, that, you know, something, like when the elevator needs to be repaired, you know, it's not one group's cost, so, or the parking lot.
And how would that be determined? Because it would seem like you're asking if the select board goes in first, I mean, do you already have association fees and an idea of what those would be?
Sure, so the building, we've determined based on past history of operating and our current operation, runs about $45,000 a year to run. So it's about a dollar fifty a square foot. And as a condo association, depending on how it's broken up, if it's done by floors, could theoretically be done by, we could do the fourth floor and four condos. I mean, it's a lot of options, but no matter how you deal with it, the condo members would pay their proportionate amount of the dues to run the common portion of the building. So snow plowing, lawn mowing, general insurance for the building. So it would, right out of the gate, would be, would be whatever square footage the town would be interested in, would be the proportionate of the 30,000 total. So.
Yeah, so I think, yes, Stan?
The only question I got is temporary rental off the table?
Um, yeah, the challenge, right, the challenge for us is, we are showing, I mean, yesterday we met with a group from Toronto that wants, would, may be interested in the entire mill property as well as our building. And while they're just early in the stages of looking at things, if we put the town in there, they move on to another property because it's off the table.
So, yes or no?
Probably no.
No, okay. Because we need to start looking at other facilities.
Yeah, I mean, the return on investment for us is a negative $104,000, so.
And moving the museum and going to town in there then decreases what your tax is as well, because then you have two 501(c)(3) in your building.
Mm-hmm.
So that's an advantage for you.
So we have explored donating to churches, which would also potentially remove the tax, it from the tax roll. And we have churches interested in the property.
So that's an impact on the town as well?
Mm-hmm. We can donate the property and take a tax write-off for our improvements and the assessed value, which we haven't excluded as an option. So, I mean, it's an economics play at some point. When we go home to our wives, they ask us, what are we doing with that? So, but our goal is, you know, let's do something that makes it not be a dark building and adds to the tax roll to some extent.
Or doesn't burden the town by reducing the tax.
So, yeah, let's try to work something out within the next few days or certainly next week.
Yeah, look at it, whenever. And if we're not available, we'll give you the door code. You know where the lights are?
Where are you?
Yeah. So thanks for your time.
Well, thank you very much, Paul.
Okay, do you want me to leave? I made four or five copies of this.
We like options.
And I can send you these too.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Let's see if we have a copy machine here.
Yeah, I can rotate.
So these, I may not have made enough. These are just the letter I sent today.
Yeah.
And then our internal summary or quotes, and then from a contractor named Steve Motowski.
Yeah.
And a couple other people are in here, just to give you an idea of what we've been talking about.
Sure.
There's three of those.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't think I have.
I have one.
You've got one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so you got enough.
Okay, yes.
Stan's got one, we're in good shape.
Bruce isn't here, Ben's not here, so.
Stan's got, he's going to make copies of those time and floor plans.
Well, I'm keeping this.
Sure, yeah, that'd be helpful, but.
Nothing here.
Don't think you have anything else there.
It's right here.
This is warmed up.
This is, well, this is over. I'll get it back to you soon. We're all ding-ding.
Sure. Well, thank you guys for taking the time to.
Coming out.
Come on. We'll work something out because it's been a year or two since I've been in the building.
Are we looking at something after 4:30 or after 5? Is there lights up there?
Yeah. That would be my preference, but if you need to do it in the middle of the day, I could always.
And we could, yeah, anytime's good with us. We can go after today.
Up right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're probably tied up for enough for tonight.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll be, we'll be in touch and.
Great.
Because we better.
Thank you.
Really move, make some decisions here.
Soon.
Yesterday, like.
Stan, you can keep those copies.
I can keep those?
Yeah, I remember, we have PDFs.
Okay. The other thing is, you could take them and scan them to me, too.
No, no, you keep those.
Okay.
And then we'll send you an email of our PDFs.
Okay.
Sure.
You can zoom in on them.
Yes.
Thanks a lot.
Well, thank you very much.
Good night.
Just ask what the path will be, if you should opt to change, since this was voted at a town meeting to go a particular direction, how that plays out, and also how much money we've expended thus far on architectural renderings for the second time.
Yeah, I don't have a total number on architectural. I have since last, since we had the bond vote and all the dealings we've had dealing with the grant application and those funds, and I spent about, I think about 12,000 to 15,000. I don't have a detailed number now. I think if you look at your budget report, there's an item in there under buildings for town office renovations, 16,000.
Yes.
So that's essentially what we have spent on the Section 106 for the environmental stuff, as well as the architectural, running back and forth with different plans.
Now, would this, if you should change your path, would it require a vote?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
The bond is, the renovations of the existing building, I believe, are worded in the bond.
That's what it sounds like.
Well, it would require something else, and it's too late to do anything on the town meeting at this point.
Yes.
Because we got to get the warning done and the, unless you did it in the next couple of days.
Well, yeah, I don't think that's realistic, so.
But it's certainly an option, Mark, if you can.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we don't own this building either, so.
We do, we do. You own it, Tom.
Well.
You have a deed to it.
Yes.
The deed has a reversion clause in it.
But I understand that, you know, and I've never seen the deed, but the proctors own it.
No, they don't.
Oh.
I'll show you the deed.
A lot of people in town are misinformed, then.
They are.
But if we were to move out?
It would go back to the.
Go back to the proctors.
That's right.
Exactly, we don't own it.
We own it, yeah, we do.
Until we move out.
But it's not like we own it to sell it. Like, we can't sell, get out, move out somehow.
Yeah, but we do own it.
We own it only while we're here.
That's a common line, I guess.
Well, true, because we're also talking about doing renovations on a, on a building, and if we ever move, then we've lost out on that renovation money anyway, because we, it goes back to the proctors.
Yep.
Well, that's not completely true. All you have to do is hold one meeting here, here, you can have other things be in here that are maybe a relative to the town, so that's not clearly, that's not a factual statement.
I don't think the proctors really.
I doubt it.
No.
But they don't even get involved. You have to clearly have left the building and have nothing in it for them to come involved. So for that to happen, I mean, is highly unlikely.
Yeah.
I will send everybody a copy of the deed, which has item seven, which is the reversion clause.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on here and review of the January 13 minutes. All laws in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, no? Okay, it looks as though we've got any open public comment. Hearing any, so.
Well, I'll have good stuff, then, if nobody has any. So Proctor High School, attended Yale, Modern UN, one of two high schools in the state of Vermont that attended. There were about 1,600 kids there from all over the country, from the Philippines, from Nepal. It was an amazing opportunity for our kids, and I think it just reestablishes how fortunate we are with the high school through the town, and is, is another insight of how the proctors provided for students and how they looked out for future generations. So I'll tie that to the watershed, as how they look forward to future generations and how we continue to benefit from their foresight.
All right. Highway Department, Stan?
You have a outline of our activities over the last couple of weeks. And fortunately, we didn't have a lot of snow ice events, but they were long duration. If you note at the bottom, we had 33 hours with Kyle and Paul, and that doesn't count what John does, because we don't track his overtime. So they were out there quite a bit in the last two weeks. A lot of this is Saturday and Sunday type stuff.
Yeah.
But it's a full eight hours on a Saturday or Sunday.
You did a good job, those are good.
Yes, they've done excellent jobs this year.
One of the items that, just a note on there, pump down the sludge tank. Of course, we do have a holding tank for all of the water that goes on the garage floor, oil separator. So every so often, it has to be cleaned out.
Yeah.
Coal patch is on the agenda, and whenever we find one, or if someone else finds one, we get guys out there to fill them in. Okay, go on bridge damage. A Bennington Furniture delivery truck hit the upper beams. I think I included in your packet a report from the Highway Department that there's no structural damage. However, there was some work that needed to be done. Jim Moore has gone out and done it, and I'm just waiting for an invoice from him to forward on to Bennington Furniture for repairing. But I got a copy of what he did, I didn't put it in your packet. It was a matter of resetting the pins, wooden pins that hold the thing together. It was a matter of resetting those, and at some point in time, the next person that hits it may have to replace them.
This is the second time a bridge has been hit by an oversized truck.
Yes.
Neither time have had an engineer go down and check for damage or what he thought. I recommend this time you have an engineer go down and look at it and make sure we're okay.
The Transportation Agency sent their engineers down.
Did they send you anything?
Yes, I got a letter from, an email from Ryan Sanderson, which said that they found no structural damage.
Okay, so what about other damage?
The other, the other damage is what Jim is taking care of.
Okay.
Well, the first time, well, the first time that I remember it being hit, they tore off the boards on each end.
Yeah.
And Jim went down and replaced all the boards.
I did, there's a little damage inside too, if I remember right. Jim said one joint had pulled out.
I think so, too.
This time?
No.
The first time, I think.
And again, the state inspected it the last time, too. They did not have a concern.
Do we contact, like, Bennington Furniture and say?
This is the Sheriff's Department report.
In this.
Sheriff's got it all, all in the report.
Right. Well, I don't mean contacting to say you hit our bridge, but kind of contacting to say, don't hit our bridge again. Like, tell your drivers to, you know, there is a clearance.
Well, I think they were probably going to be fined for leaving the scene of an accident too.
Oh, we left, too. That's what the sheriff's report says, getting a, leaving the scene of the accident.
Yeah.
Were the DMV truck police involved?
I doubt it. Sheriff's Department did the investigation.
Would you mind sending me a copy of that state report?
Yep.
You know, this, this seems to be statewide here, this problem. You know, the bridge in Windsor was hit several times, the Sanderson Covered Bridge in Brandon was hit and damaged.
Woodstock, was it?
Yes, Pooling Bridge, the little red bridge up here in Pittsburgh was damaged.
Now, one of the things that Ryan did suggest is that we put a steel structure in front of it.
I-beam thing in front of it on this side.
Okay.
They hit that before they hit the bridge.
That's a beautiful covered bridge.
Yeah, I just, what he suggested was pretty.
Put up a piece of iron for folds in front of it, you know.
But, yeah, I think in that report, and you'll see it when Stan's in it, she, is a sketch of three I-beams, one on each side and one across the top. And put that maybe 10 feet in front of the bridge, and they hit that, they aren't going to go very far, so. So, okay, anything else on? So, okay, anything else on that, Stan? Oh, the recalls, is that anything serious?
It's a recall on the two Fords.
Yeah.
Which we've scheduled to do.
Any major things that a, that a call for?
Yeah, the recalls, the nothings.
No.
Nothing major.
Nothing that the things trucks have.
They're not, they're not safety issues at all.
Yeah.
What's the school, street, driveway problem?
There, at one point in the past, there was a storm drain constructed down the south side of South, of School Street. The property owner is complaining because it is heaving.
Yeah, so.
He's got, he got about a six-inch bump. Talking with John, somebody in the past had put in a small berm in front of the driveway to keep the water going down the driveway and keep it going down the street, but this has raised up quite a bit. John was going up to see him. What we will do is to cut it out for the present time, because it is, it is quite a bump, and then go back in in the spring and try to rectify it, probably digging out the materials that are on top of the culvert, and putting them back with some that don't heave.
Yeah, I think somebody did that when I went, I went up by there Sunday and looked so somebody had shaved that.
Nobody has done anything, except unless the property owner did it.
Yeah, maybe the property owner did a temporary one, but it's nothing we can do till, really till spring.
Well, what we, what we do is cut the berm out of there.
Right, yeah.
So he doesn't have a six-inch hump to drive over.
Someone asked me, too, about the property on East Street, the, where they brought the big piping. Remember, he wanted to put pipe, fill that all in, and we said he couldn't, because on Chapel Street, there's a pipe that runs under that's a drain.
On which street?
East.
East Street?
Yeah. You know, Chapel Street?
Yeah.
Okay, right there where he was filling it in?
Yeah.
And we said he couldn't because of the drain, and so he bought pipe.
Yeah.
And someone asked me if he just laid the pipe, if he thinks that's gonna do the job, I just swear it's laid there. So I didn't know if John's been in touch with him about actually connecting.
He has, he has talked with him, we told him what he had to do, which is he had to get the storm water from above his property, through his property, to the storm drain to go across the road.
Right.
And I saw the pipe there, too, and it kind of surprised me, because it's an awful big piece of pipe.
Yeah.
But what he's gotta do is get the drainage so that it goes down.
Right, into the, the, right, okay.
How he does it is, we haven't told him how to do it.
Right.
We told him what he had to do.
Okay.
Yeah, our salt, you know, we're getting up there, but we gotta keep our roads safe, so I don't think there's any town that isn't having that problem.
Yeah, we've got, you know, the four loads that came in, the last four, they're probably, I don't know how much of it he's used and how much he's got out there, so again, I can't compare, because I'm not sure how much salt is in the shed.
Look, so there was a pretty good pile in there when I was down there the other day, and so.
Yeah, we're running almost double compared to last year.
That was my question, is how much do we have in storage? Because we're only twelve point forty-eight tons from our budgeted amount, so that's my question, too. How much is in storage?
Well, what, what we're gonna do is we're gonna keep on doing road maintenance.
Yeah.
And look at the end, when we stop doing road maintenance, to see whether we need to adjust other items on the budget to cover the, the overage for salt.
I guess the question, then, is, are these coming automatic, or are we ordering them?
We order them.
Ordered them.
Okay.
So hopefully, he ends up in June with an empty shed.
Yeah.
Be nice to have some in there, but from a budget standpoint, we won't order any more than we, we won't stockpile it for next year.
Yeah.
I mean, we did go over last year, so I'm expecting that we're.
But if I gave you the full, if I gave you the full spreadsheet, I could show you three years that we underran.
Which is fine, I.
So it, it varies. We budget the best we can budget, and if we're over, we're over, we adjust someplace else. If we're under, we're under, and that means we got some more money to spend on maintenance or improvements.
And I think they got all our trees down, the trees.
They got all the trees, with the exception of the stumps on Gorham Bridge Road.
Yeah.
What we're taking down now are some additional trees that have come to our attention since we awarded the contract, and we gave them to Trees Incorporated, because they gave us a good price on the first contract. We got another twenty-five hundred dollars worth of trees that are on the secondary list. One of them on School Street, which you've seen, maybe if you've driven up there, and there's a couple others that are dead. And we need to get them out, need to get them out.
Anything else for Highway that anyone has?
Traffic ordinance?
Yeah, the traffic ordinance. I wanna wrap this up.
Any additions or changes or?
Well, I looked through, and I couldn't find anything under the parking for, when we talked about Kane Street.
Yeah, that was the.
Remember?
Kane Street, you know, we talked about.
Signs, no parking? Kane Street.
No parking? That could be added on the list. And I, I picked up the ones I had noted down.
Yeah. That was a while back.
The other thing, article four, enforcement officials, we're still showing only the sheriff and the state police.
Yes.
If we choose to go with another agency in the future, this'll have to be modified again.
That was one of my questions.
Unless we change it to designated police authority.
Thought we were gonna do that.
Right. And then I had a question about the speed limit on South Street Extension. Just wondered why that one was thirty-five.
Don't ask me, because that was done years ago. I think.
This seems strange to me, I'm like, why is that one thirty-five?
The introductory sentence to that section talks about traffic studies, so I assume that there were traffic studies done. My understanding of the statutes are you need to have a traffic study done in order to set a speed limit, or you can set the speed limit, and if nobody complains in five years, it's good.
Yeah, I'm sure it's been more than five years.
These speed limits are the same ones that are there before. All I did was make them all going north to south, rather than going south on this one and going north on the other one, and rewording them. I have a one blank, which is where the twenty-five mile an hour sign is on West Street, and I need to have a certain point zero something miles from Columbia Avenue, that the sign, because the old one, if you'll notice, is crossed out, is the old village limit.
Right.
Nobody knows where the old village limit is, except the old village.
Did the state, they probably did change it, I probably just didn't realize it. Did the state change the speed limit from Newton Street onto Route Three? I always felt like it went from Proctor and then picked up at fifty.
Okay, where the twenty-five mile an hour sign is, is the end of the Proctor ownership.
Right.
Yeah.
So the speed limit beyond that is fifty.
Okay, 'cause it says forty.
Where does it say forty?
Right past Newton Street. There's a sign that says forty miles an hour, and I was like.
Yeah, but coming from Pittsburgh, though.
No, coming from Proctor.
Going into Pittsburgh?
Yeah.
It's just a short distance before it changes to fifty.
But that was never there before, I don't think.
They did that when they did the road over.
Oh, 'cause I was.
When they paved it.
When they paved it in the summer, then.
Yeah.
Huh, that's weird, 'cause that's like about ten, twenty feet.
But see, that's, that's a state highway.
Right.
And they can set their own speed limit.
Right.
Yeah.
I know, I just was questioning when it went there, because it wasn't there before, it was always fifty.
Yeah.
So I thought it was weird.
South Street Extension, is that owned by the town of Proctor?
Yes.
Where John Corliss is?
Yeah.
Okay, so the state must have given that back to us years ago.
When they rerouted.
Okay.
And that one, again, has traditionally been thirty-five miles an hour.
That's why I don't get why that's thirty-five.
The new road has been thirty-five miles an hour.
Strange. Why, what, did, was it, I was thirty-five? I don't know, I just thought it was strange, because it was thirty-five, and it's not really that long, but. It's a whole road, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think that was done when they, the new road was put in.
Did that, too?
You know, they dropped it.
Yeah.
It was fifty.
I don't either.
I think Carol said everything else is twenty-five.
Right, well, that's thirty-five, and it's.
The only one that's different.
Yeah. It's not like.
Yeah, do we want to, you wanna look over any notes that we've got on Kane Street, Stan, and?
For Kane Street?
Yeah.
It would just, the wording would be the same as the wording on all of the other ones, which restricted parking. School, North Street, School Street, West Street.
That's right, yeah.
Or High Street. So the wording would be the same as that for Kane Street, from the intersection of, uh.
West Street.
West Street to the end of the road. Right, just up McGary Street is there, too.
Right.
Yeah.
And that, I would put it on that one also.
What's more about that issue, remember up on Kane Street?
Yeah.
Other people parking there, and day and night, like moving in and out constantly, and the fire trucks could never get by there if there's cars parked.
McGary Street is the same, is.
Oh, right.
Has a similar problem.
Okay.
The people who live on McGary, on McGary Street have their own parking lot down below, but.
Oh, okay.
The ones right on the corner park wherever they feel like.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll throw that in to McGary.
I'll add Kane and McGary.
Could I throw up for discussion, this traffic ordinance? We've been so busy with other stuff, it's taken six months, and we're still, we aren't done yet. Could I suggest we give some of the ordinances to the Planning Commission and turn them up, get them back to us?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. You know, the ones that you had on the list was the purchasing policy, and the other one is the, uh, town clerk's operation policy, which you haven't seen, the purchasing you had. The other one, I'm looking at some of the other ones that are over five years old.
So can we make a motion to approve this one with those additional changes that we noted?
With those two additions, then, I would, I would give you a final.
So, I have a question or comment. There were things that we talked about at the November twelfth meeting that seemed to end up differently in here, in particular, page five, section two. Ben spoke to it, and we had talked about not having the sidewalk down Park Street, the line, because technically, where the town has the sidewalk, you dump it off into a grate, you know, that sidewalk does not offshoot into the crosswalk. And we had also talked about putting no parking signs on the side where the tennis courts were, on that side of the street, so there was no parking on Park Street on that side of the street to eliminate parking issues.
I think what I wrote in here, there was no parking on Park Street anywhere. That's what's in the ordinance.
Right, and in the November twelfth meeting, there was a great deal of discussion, and, pardon, we talked about not having the continued orange line as a sidewalk down Park Street. And in order to not have people park, to put no, a no parking sign, so people didn't park in front of the tennis court there. That, that was discussed at the November twelfth meeting, it went back in twelve minutes. So, I, I just think a couple things. There's limited parking at the school, and I'm not sure why we want to not allow parking there. You're gonna have a town meeting there, people are gonna park out there, they do. You're gonna have voting there, people are gonna park on the street, they do. I'm not sure, I think there's a better way for us to come to a safe occurrence of allowing parking there without saying no parking at all. I'm not sure why there wouldn't be parking allowed at all.
I think what I attempted to do was, one, designate that striped section of pavement as a sidewalk, so no parking on sidewalks. I believe that was the discussion we had at prior meetings. I also put the no parking on Park Street with the exception of special events with a traffic control plan. The high school can submit a traffic control plan for all high school events that are going on, as to how to handle it. I think what I wrote in there, a traffic control plan to be reviewed by the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Highway Department, and the Select Board as to its adequacy. People have complained about parking down there. You either ignore it, and we cross those sections out of the, of this, or you address it, and I think I was told to address it, so that's what I have done.
So at the November twelfth meeting, actually, the conversation that revolved around the sidewalk was that that's, that is not used as a sidewalk, that if it is a sidewalk, then it's inadequate, because you do not, you dump people off into a grate, so I'm not sure how that worked. There's a sidewalk that we put in on the other side by the tennis courts that people use. Ben said and addressed at the November, November twelfth meeting that people don't use it. We talked about that pretty extensively at that meeting, so.
On the whole west side of the street, you mean? That part they don't use?
There's an orange line, for years, no one even knew.
Right, like in front of, like, where Upper Winter lives and all that.
Yes, yes.
Right, and no one uses that as a sidewalk?
No.
I always use that as a sidewalk when I walk up that way.
No.
'Cause there's no, nothing else at all on the other side, except for the tennis courts.
I'm happy with the way it's written, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
So there's not gonna be any parking allowed on Park Street at all?
It's laser.
Except for special events.
So is that, how does that get out, like, is that gonna be in here, like, special events, or any high school events?
Special events. A traffic control plan for special events.
It, it just seems like, I, I don't understand the punitive nature of this, when it could be adjusted in a way that is beneficial for all of us involved.
I feel we have a liability with eliminating the sidewalk in front of the high school, having no sidewalk whatsoever.
Yeah.
That bothers me.
The sidewalk doesn't even go into the crosswalk, so if you wanna have a liability, you're dumping people off in front of Ryan Sanderson's old house at the corner with no crosswalk across. The crosswalk goes from the sidewalk across to the other sidewalk. So that, that's the sidewalk that, if you want, I mean, if you wanna talk about a liability.
Well, if, if you want us to paint one there this summer, we can do it, you know, I don't think it's really necessary, but.
Either do I, but you had someone that was an instructor that said at this meeting at November twelfth, and we talked about it fairly extensively, and said it's not used, it is not a sidewalk.
What instructor was that?
Ben Curtis, the seventh one member.
The teacher, okay. It's the only sidewalk we have in front of the high school.
Cool, yeah.
I, I feel nervous about eliminating it.
Yeah, I know.
That's better than nothing, in my opinion.
And so what about all the streets that don't have sidewalks, and people walk on that?
They don't have a high school.
Yeah.
Yeah, my street doesn't have a sidewalk.
Neither does mine. And kids walk on it, people walk on it, so.
Yeah.
And what about the other issue that's not addressed in here, that was talked about fairly extensively, also, people just parking on the street in the travel portion of the lane? That was an issue that was brought forward, it was an issue that was brought to the sheriff, it was an issue that the FedEx man sent an email, I know, to the sheriff, and that was discussed fairly extensively on here, too, and that has no place in here either.
Wasn't that on specific streets? So. So I was gonna go, was that North Street where one of the biggest?
No, if, if you live on a deadened street and you have people that park in the street, in the travel portion of the little lane, that impacts driving, that impacts access. That was also talked about fairly extensively and that has become, isn't mentioned in here either, so.
All right, so I have a couple of questions, going back to the high school though. Back, how many fire hydrants are there and what is the access to the fire hydrants if people are parked on the side of the road? That, that's one of my questions. If we, if we took this out.
The fire hydrant is at the end of.
It's on the corner, right?
By Franklin's property and the parking lot.
And nobody parks at that side. Right, it's down, right?
Yeah, and then.
It's not the pool, it's next to.
Right at the end of the high school.
The school parking lot and Franklin's.
Like when you loop around, right there.
Right there.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah. I, I think that's a, we'd have a problem on every street.
Well, you know, I park in the street front of my house once in a while because I don't feel like driving up the driveway and my neighbors do, I don't mind going around their cars, so.
Yeah.
It's the village, yeah.
I think that that's.
It's the village, where you can't get deliveries.
Well, city has parking on both sides of the street.
Yeah, their roads are much wider though, often. If you live there, if you live on a deadened street and you have people from multiple homes parking in the street, it makes it difficult to get down the street. It was something we discussed when the sheriff was here.
I disagree.
It was something the sheriff talked about and it was something we discussed about saying you could park there to run in, download, but you're not allowed to park on the street. And that is absent from this as well. I'm not sure what happened to the notes when we discussed this November twelfth, but it seems like a lot of things.
Here's my other part about that. We don't really have the policing during the day, so how are we going to make that happen? We do not have the budget for that kind of policing, nor do we have a lot of police time during the day. So I don't know how we would enforce it either.
So.
For if, as far as parking on the side, like my street, for instance, people park on the side all the time. It's kind of annoying, but we deal with it.
Yeah.
Because if it's, you have no recourse unless it's in here. It's no different than the gentleman came about the daycare. And it's no different when the sheriff came, unless it's listed in the ordinance, there's nothing that could be addressed, so.
We'd have a hundred streets.
No, exactly what you said was, and they gave you a phrase, that you can park to unload, park to, but not parking on the travel portion of the street. That's exactly what the sheriff said when he was here.
I'm, again, I'm happy with the way it's written now and I'd like to move forward.
Yeah, let's get it off the.
So we can remove this, have we changed this?
Yeah.
Give you a hard copy, if you want. Tom, there are two areas, John, is gonna give me some information on where have painted sidewalks. Besides the one at the high school, besides the one at North Street in front of Franklin's. He's got a chunk out on West Street, a short one to hook people up. Not a big issue, but I told him if we're gonna write them in, let's write them all in.
So, before we do that, so there's one more question I had because it, if we're talking about front of the, the high school, which I can see where this is, it's gonna have a larger impact. A control plan pre-approved by the fire chief, public works, woman, sheriff department, and select board. So all those people have to approve it, or is it or?
This is a special event, if the school has got a basketball game, they come in, they could do it once, it'd be done with it forever.
But is it or, fire chief, public works, sheriff, and select board, all those people have to approve that plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and so you're saying that if they came and gave that plan, it would happen once?
They could make one plan which would cover all basketball games, all school events.
And I'm not really sure what that, what does that entail? What am I looking over for a traffic control plan? I'm not a traffic control person, so.
I think there has been a concern over access by emergency vehicles into the high school area where there are special events. I think a parking plan would provide some degree of assurance that there will be adequate emergency vehicle access to the street.
Okay, that's all you're asking?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it, it doesn't need to be a difficult plan, but it needs to be something that. Well, the, the fire chief can says, yes, I could drive a fire truck up Park Street and get through. I could get a fire truck to here or there. So, but this, it's, it's to address the questions that came up as far as access where people are parking all over the street to go to a basketball game or to some other event.
Does this also include, sorry?
Yeah.
Um, the, um, the signage that we talked about, putting signs in just certain areas that were a real problem?
We would sign all the no parking.
No parking, yeah.
We would sign all the no parking areas.
So how will that be addressed if you're painting sidewalks in front of Franklin's and people park across that every day that they're there?
I haven't seen anybody park on it since.
On the sidewalk there?
Well, probably they have been, but I haven't looked to see.
Probably they park in the front there.
I, I park at the front and don't park on that crosswalk.
Yeah. Yeah, I've never seen anybody park in the park, in the sidewalk. Okay, let's, uh.
Do we need a motion, or we all?
Yeah.
You could, you could, yes, you're, you're gonna need a motion.
Motion, yeah.
Motion.
To adopt, and I'd give you a hard copy proceeding.
Traffic ordinances, let's review them. Does that work?
Yeah. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Stan, would you mind just emailing Dick Horner and ask him if the planning commission, he's the chairman, be willing to look at some ordinances for us?
Yeah, which, which, which ones would you have the planning commission?
Well, dogs, I'd like to see checked and updated.
That's the animal ordinance, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I would too, because I'm kind of wondering, I didn't, we didn't hear back from anybody about the dog registration this past spring and who wasn't registered still? And if anything was done about it?
Anybody that doesn't register their dog, that had it registered the year before, was contacted by the sheriff's department. Or was supposed to, I'll put it, it's supposed to be contacted by the sheriff's department.
Okay, so let me ask this question to you, because I, I've been asked this several times because there seems to be a lot of loose dogs lately. So if there's a loose dog and it's not registered, what happens?
If it's picked up? I, I can't tell you exactly what would happen, whether it would be reported, citation for non-registered dog, and left on the property.
So I, I think we do need to have the planning commission look at that, because we need some kind of plan. Because bad, that's what they get, bad, if the sheriff even shows up. So there's no enforcement or anything and there's a lot of loose dogs lately.
Okay.
A lot.
Again, as we've spoken before, for the sheriff department to address a loose dog, there has to be either a visual by the sheriff's deputy seeing it, or a sworn complaint. And we have had very few sworn complaints, we've had none. We've had a lot of people call up about dogs.
Right.
But nobody is ready to issue a formal complaint.
Step up and put something on paper. Okay, uh, contract six.
Water project, contract six.
Well, better move into the board of water commissioners, excuse me.
Make a motion to move into water? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in the board of water commissioners, anything on the?
Nothing outstanding or, yeah. Nothing outstanding or in on affairs waters concerned. No breaks, that's the more important thing.
Yes, that's good. Okay, contract six.
Okay, I have one person left to sign. She is supposed to be in Wednesday afternoon at three thirty. Then I will send all of the easements to Mr. George. He will write the certificate of adequate site interest to complete the project. We put that with the package and send it to the state, that's what that whole email is all about. And then we will get a authorization to approve. We have correspondence from Belden saying they will hold their price, so there's no problem on that. What I would be looking for tonight is a motion to authorize the chair to sign the contract with Belden for contract six, subject to approval by the state.
Yeah, FED.
Approval of award.
Is there a time limit on this, like when it has to be done by, is there a deadline?
There is a top number of date of contract days in it from the day they start until they complete. I haven't figured out what those, I haven't, I don't know what those days are.
Okay.
Again, we told them to start sometime between April first and May first, and we're on track for that. And how many days are in, I'd have to go back and look at the contract to see how many days they gave it. I can send you that number.
I think it's a hundred.
I just wanna make sure that we have a, a deadline.
There, there is a number of calendar days to complete the work.
Yeah.
So we can have a motion to authorize the chair to sign.
Motion to approve?
Same.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
The, uh, the last easement, Stan, you don't see a problem with that?
What's that?
The last.
The one last person to sign off, you don't see an issue?
No, no problem, she just, she works two jobs. And she is, and Wednesday is the day that she is off during the day to get her in.
Okay, delinquent accounts, any?
This is the same report you had before. The only thing that I have requested is for Celia to update it to current and for John to tell me how many of these properties could be shut off tomorrow. That they've got the curb stops to do with.
What does number twenty-eight, this spring agreement mean? I thought we already had an agreement.
It means he had an agreement. We, all the rest of these people out here had agreements as of, uh, this fall. He had a carryover agreement for last spring, so he had an agreement, it's just that he hadn't kept up on it.
So.
And the reason I differentiated spring, because all the rest of them were done at the same time.
So he had an agreement last spring, we're already into, coming into this spring, and he's never paid anything on that?
We can shut him off anytime, because he.
Should he have been shut off like six, eight months ago?
Could have been, wasn't.
I'm just saying, I mean, it's like if there's, like, he should have been on the list as delinquent, you know?
Last spring.
Yeah.
He, he was, he was up to date until some point, uh, and then he's been slipping now. And he's not up to date now.
Yeah. Number eight, that's the one where there's like three customers on one line, is that?
Yes, that's the one.
Would you ask the water department to give us a plan, how to fix that?
You've asked for that before, I told you that that was taking more. You'd have to get in our private property, you'd have to get easements. And I say that, what I told you is I would speak with the person, I have not spoken with the person. The other remedy is a tax sale on the building.
You're busy, let, let the water department do it.
I don't want the water department to do it, Tom, because they don't know what I need to do.
I thought they were the experts.
They're operators. What you would need is a separate pipeline to each one of those houses with a curb stop inside the right of way.
You have said that numerous times.
That's right, and that's what we're not gonna do.
Let's see a little drawing, let's get a cost estimate, okay? I, I don't know, we don't like these turnoffs. You know, you have bought these since we brought this out.
That's right. Because they will all come through eventually. Anybody that sells a house?
Okay, so let's, let's get a plan for this one.
Get a plan for the, to these, I'll give you a sketch of what the three are and what, what's involved in getting them. It's gonna be, it's gonna be easements from each one of them in order to enter their property.
Okay.
And if they say no.
Don't we have to start somewhere? Stan?
Wouldn't we have to start, I am not necessarily concerned about that water shut-off. I have told you I speak with her, I haven't spoken with her. I apologize for that.
Don't apologize, okay.
I apologize for telling you I was gonna do it and haven't done it. I don't apologize for not speaking to her, but telling you I would is what I apologize for.
I don't wanna fight over this, okay? I want a plan, how we're gonna fix this, all right? And a cost estimate, please. Is that too much to ask?
No.
Thank you. They are number eight on the list, and growing.
Yep.
Okay, anything else for water? Motion to go into the board of sewage commissioners.
Wait.
Oh, yeah. Yeah?
Nothing else on water, no.
Okay, go ahead. Mike, wait a minute, go ahead. So moved.
Uh, just before we.
Second, can I have a second on the sewage?
Before we second?
Oh, yeah.
The fire hydrant on Patch Street.
Yes.
Where do we stand on that?
No different than we were two weeks ago.
Okay.
Dig it up.
Well, we've certainly had some good weather for digging.
We have had dig, yeah, good weather for digging, but I don't think we're gonna dig until spring.
Okay, but we're still not sure what's wrong with it, right?
We don't know what's wrong with it. The experts in our water department don't know what's wrong with it.
So let me ask this, what is the closest fire hydrant for anybody on Patch Street if this fire hydrant doesn't work?
I don't know, there's any impact at all.
I just wanna make sure that.
Our fire protection is concerned, hydrants on either side of this one.
Yeah, there's a, one at the wastewater. And I don't know if there's any others up the hill on Patch, but.
East Streets, they're on East Street.
Yeah. Yeah, East Street and.
But they could use this, this hydrant in an emergency to fight a fire.
I don't think there's any flow at all.
No flow at all?
No.
That's what we've been told.
Yeah, and the other one, I think, is down on the corner of Curtis and East Street. Board of Sewerage Commissioners, had a.
Motion to.
Motion with no second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Little Street Pump Station.
What you have is a, the narrative part of the report, what you don't have is the drawings. Just to brief you, we met with the engineers last week.
They had a nice presentation.
Yeah.
The doctors are here, essentially, this is Little Street Pump Station. This part of it was rebuilt in the blue, but the pump station was done in sixty-one. This little piece of red here, this little piece of red here, and the shell was not done at that time. This is the big area where they found a lot of potential influence, info, which is coming into the broken pipe. This one had roots and was played, it's all six inch plate, it was installed in eighteen ninety, plus or minus.
That's amazing.
Yes.
The big issue, of course, is that pump station, the pump, one pump's runs forty-four seven. The second pump, I think it's overloads. In the past, we're gonna be, have started to fill up and can't keep up with two pumps. We've had to hire A1 to get down and pump it out. So we did not discharge. There is a overflow pipe from that pump station to out of the creek.
We did discharge.
We, we did last April fifteenth, there was a storm. After three days of pumping.
So what the project is on the table, that Dale will be presenting us an estimate for, because we don't have an estimate now, is to rebuild from Little Street under the-
Railroad tracks.
Railroad track, and up to Pleasant Street, and then Pleasant Street-
Up to Charles.
And then there's a separate estimate for Eden Avenue.
Eden Avenue.
The cost is going to be close to half a million dollars for it.
And the engineer did mention that we could do some slip lining, lining the old pipe in a few spots to help with the cost, but I don't think it's a ton of money.
Yeah, they used a turd blast, a blasting, yeah.
Oh, well, they're splitting-
They were blowing up the old plate pipe and they pulled the new, new pipe out through. But the big core is, is loss of diameter, it's only six inches, you can-
They don't recommend slip lining on a six-inch pipe.
So where are these pipes in correlation to the road? Are they down the middle of the road, are they down the side of the road?
Good portion of it is out in the woods. From the corner of Eden and Pleasant, all the way down to Gorham Bridge, the corner on Gorham Bridge Road is all overland.
The rest of it, you could look at your manhole covers and see where they are.
Well, so it's down the road?
Usually.
It's down the road.
No.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so we're also talking about some, some road issues?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Eden Avenue.
We have the alternatives of getting it replaced versus slip lining versus blasting versus another technique that they had. The pipe has to be in reasonably good condition in order to use these other techniques.
All right, so I guess my other question is, if that part of Eden Avenue is going to be done, are we going to address the other water issues on that end of Eden Avenue that are running down both sides of the road right now?
We can't, but right now we're looking at a sewer project.
Well, right, but you're already digging up the road, and you've already, we've got water coming down this side that's going to eat under that road, and water coming down this side. We've got the regular water that always goes down, but now we have it on the other side of the road, too.
So we could add storm drainage or storm water management as part of the project, and with the way that the state is viewing these and environmental agency, if storm water is part of their program now.
But the big thing is going to be going under the railroad tracks.
Right, and that's the same with North Street, too? Going under, are we going under the railroad tracks there?
No. No, there's no sewer under the railroad, railroad bridge on North Street.
Okay. Just under the underpass? Does it go under the underpass?
No.
Okay.
There is no sewer on that street, right?
No.
Where it comes back onto Gorham Bridge.
On the south side goes south, and the north side goes, but Caris Avenue goes north.
Caris Avenue, yeah.
It's just a water line on the bridge.
There is some funding for this, I believe you said, but not-
This, the next step will be a community engineer report, which will have dollars and cents and a recommended player for the board action. We are setting an application to be on the priority list for sewer projects, not that, you know, just so we're on the list, and then after the funding areas done, we're going to come for a state funding for final design, and then we can go to construction law.
So maybe by twenty twenty-three, I think they said, we might be lucky to start.
If you follow the state's routine.
Right, after the railroad bridge is done, right? Right, I was just thinking that, I'm like, first the railroad, then?
I do have copies of the board if anybody wants to take one. Which had all of the handout maps in them.
Can I?
Since Carrie's on that end of it.
Right. I'm, I'm going to get asked questions, I should probably check it out.
It's a very good report, I thought.
Excellent, the pictures in there are great, and we, we asked them to break, break the project down into sections so that we could, it would be easier to swallow.
You do mention the railroad is very difficult to deal with.
Yeah, because there's only one contractor that can run a line under the railroad tracks. And that makes it very expensive.
Yeah, there's no bidding, no.
No.
And we go under there in an old marbled-
Box culvert, that's in bad shape, that I wouldn't ask anybody to climb down in there.
And then it drops off and goes again, and, well.
Good times.
Couldn't really get on the pipe through it, didn't think.
Anything else for sewage? Okay. Okay, back to the regular select board, I think every, have you signed the bills, Carrie?
I haven't finished.
No, no, okay. Mortimer Proctor Pool Request. That's in your packet? For the pool and the youth league, for sixteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. I just need a motion to move that, we're going to do the decking up there, and the new raft.
So it's a motion regarding the pool?
And the youth league.
I thought we already did the youth league.
You did.
Last week, uh, two weeks ago.
Yeah, I mean, that one is taken care of, it's just in the cover letter, because we'll be asking for separate interviews.
Okay.
And it formally endorses their application.
Okay, second? We have a motion from Judy, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Health officer appointment, and-
You had two people who have offered, what is, Greg Gale Curtis-
Gale, yep.
And John Jazewick offered.
Yep, well, I thought we, so-
There's nothing in our packet, though, right, about that?
No, it's just a, no.
All right, so make sure.
It's just a motion to appoint someone to the position of health officer, and then there's a form that has to be filled out and sent into the-
Did we put anything out there?
What's that?
Did we put anything out there, like announcing it?
There was no announcement.
Other than being on pick.
Ben is in- Ben kind of asked for his mother, or said his mother was interested in that. And then we, Ben had a phone call from-
I mean, don't we ever, don't we look for qualifications for people?
That's up to the board.
I, I, I think since there's two, we might want to ask for maybe some qualifications?
I mean, I just, just to-
I mean, I know we're at a different level than some other areas, but I mean, it's a, it's a big job, it can be sometimes. I know we are, we're much limited as far as the health officer goes, but they also do the permitting, correct? He did the permitting, so he resigned from that.
Well, yeah, that's the zoning administrator.
Right, but he resigned from that as well, right?
Yes. Subject to the planning commission recommending someone to the board, I mean, he is still the zoning administrator until replaced.
And you guys have everything there yet?
We have not. We are looking into what would be a better option, a local person, or there is a contract zoning administrator that does several towns, and we were looking at that option.
I mean, I would like at least a letter of interest, or something saying- I think maybe a letter of interest that states some kind of qualifications, or, or something, because how, how do I know who's best qualified? And how do we just appoint somebody without knowing and then stand behind it?
Don't look at me, that's up to you.
I know, I'm saying-
At the last meeting, you appointed Ben as the interim, interim health officer, and he would said he would find someone.
Right.
And nobody told me to send out a notice.
Right, but since there's two, yeah.
Kind of said he had somebody that he thought was interested, so I thought he would just bring a name forward, but I thought, I didn't know if we put it out there that we had a resignation, so, or, you know?
I think to cover our, our basis, we should probably ask for a letter of interest with maybe some qualifications.
I would prefer that, I mean, otherwise it's just somebody making a phone call and saying, yeah, I'd like that job, and, all right, you got it, I don't know.
You know, the form that has to be submitted to the health department-
They make the final decision, the health department.
Well, right, so do we really have to give them some of the unqualified?
But it asks for, you know, education, professional degrees, occupation, and a brief statement why the select board believes the recommended individual will make a good health officer, why the select board believes, that's the statement.
Okay, so-
That's on the form that has to go, and I sent a copy-
Okay, so how do we, how do we fill that out and say we recommend them because we think they'd be good because, because by, because they're the only ones that applied for it, I mean?
I, I sent this to Ben.
Okay.
Asked him if he or his mother would fill it out.
Okay.
The portions of it that he could back. I have not seen that, maybe he was going to bring it tonight, I don't know.
Okay, and the other person hasn't filled it out either?
John Jazewick has been health officer previously, has experience of doing it, and his was a phone call to me.
I would like to see something from both of them.
Is there any pay involved in that, Stan?
Excuse me?
Sorry, pay involved with that?
Two hundred and fifty dollars per year. I mean, it's, it's a nominal sum, I think I budgeted next year three hundred.
But you've got to have somebody that's going to be, that will respond and write a report. We've had problems in the past, people have done some work, but no paperwork, so.
I would just feel better liability-wise that if I recommend somebody, it's because I'm looking at something in front of me to say, yeah, this is the person I'm choosing, rather than-
Well, because how do you say to the other person?
Huh?
Right. How, how do you say to the other person that you do not choose?
Do you want me to put a notice out that there is a vacancy?
I mean, I know it's minimal, so no one's going to really-
Could we just wait and see if Ben's candidate has something, or?
Well, I'm sure she does, but we don't have, you don't-
Right, and I would like, I want John Jazewick to send something, too.
Absolutely, he should send something, too.
So if, a letter from each one of them, right now.
Right.
Yes.
Because we're going to be troubled.
I wouldn't spend a lot on a big, huge ad in the paper.
I wouldn't put an ad, I'd put a notice on it.
You can just put a notice on the web, but just send those to that form and have them fill it out, so we have something, just at least something to go off of.
We, yeah, we should have some kind of document, we, we definitely should. This is the age of document, everything.
Okay, select board tablets, you haven't heard anything, so.
Ben, now, Pat Curtis was going to give me a quote for Chromebook, he said there should be no problem in using them and getting the information on, and I think he said something like three to four hundred dollars apiece for the, for the book. The other part is setting up the email addresses, is what he would do to set up an email address system for all of them, and again, with a recommendation that that be the official email address, so that you don't have town emails messing up your personal email. So that somebody who came in and asked for a copy of all the emails that related to town business, you'd have to turn over your phones.
Yeah, no.
To get them wrong, but I have not seen the proposal from you.
Good idea.
Yep.
You can account emails without having Chromebooks, you can still set that up. The school board all has G R C S U emails, but the school board does not supply tablets, Chromebooks, devices to board members. So you can set up the email without supplying devices.
You can, we can, we can, we can switch our whole identity over to proctor.gov and tie all of our emails into proctor.gov instead of some of them being through consolidated and some being through-
Comcast.
Comcast, which is the way we are now. But yes, we can set up an email system, no problem at all, but without the Chromebooks, so that you could use it.
Right, and have access to it anywhere.
Yes, I'll save it for paper.
Well, and that's my other part of the, comparing the cost of ink and paper and-
Time, yes.
And time to, what is the cost of this? Is it cost-effective? Is it environmentally a better option, which I think it is?
I mean, there's no question you go through a ribbon of paper for every meeting.
Right.
That's five hundred sheets divided by five members, that's a hundred pages, and that, what you see may not be a hundred, but what may be there are the ones I throw away and put back, too.
Yep.
I think electronically it's nice, too, because then when you have updates, you can just shoot them to us, we have it, you know, and then you don't have to worry about making certain we have them here.
And then, you know, and all my printer charges is what hurts, you know?
Yes.
Paper's bad enough, but-
Yes, the ink.
Yes.
Okay, Police Services.
Ben and I meet hopefully this Thursday to discuss with Pittsburgh.
Okay, we did the fraud assessment thing, okay, page two, tax sales properties, anything you want to offer on that, Stan?
Okay, you own two properties.
Yep.
Sixty West Street and Fifty Gorham, or-
Fifty-
Chatham Park Extension. How would you like to dispose of those properties? Do you want to put an ad in the paper asking for bids? Do you want to hire a realtor?
No.
My, my suggestion would be to put an ad in the Herald, there are a number of people who have already shown an interest in Sixty West Street.
Yeah, I have a lot of people asking me about that.
And so this way would, an ad in the paper, accepting bids at the next select board meeting, would get it off your table.
Maybe we could put it on the website, too, just to do that.
The, we would propose a minimum bid, which would cover-
Taxes.
All of the expenses that the town incurred, you know, the back taxes, the back water, and all the legal expenses, so there would be a minimum on, on both of them. And we know what that minimum is, because the attorney who did the tax sale broke them down, because they got added on to what was there.
Now, say the minimum was fifty thousand and somebody bid forty-five, could we get out from under and take the forty-five?
If, if we asked for a minimum, then I would say they had to bid more than the minimum.
I don't know if you want to do that, then?
Because if, if, if you accepted somebody for forty-five, and the guy said, well, I didn't give you a forty-seven, but you had the minimum of fifty.
But then I don't want to end up with a property, because we couldn't get fifty thousand.
Right, for five thousand, you know, for, for, I don't want to sit on it for another year.
Well, yeah, the minimums, and I don't know what the answer, but they're not fifty thousand.
I, I understand that.
Right, they're a lot less than that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think that it's important to have a minimum myself, because somebody can say, I'll take it for twenty thousand.
Right.
And what if the next bid's under, or ten?
Well, the other thing is, I would hope we would have the final say, no matter who.
The wording, you know, the wording would be, the select board can consider, waive, reject, and do whatever else they wish.
But you said, like, if one's like ten thousand dollars, most people are going to pay the ten thousand dollars to get a house, you know what I mean? It's not like there's seventy-five thousand and they get a bid for seventy-five dollars.
The goal is to recap what we've got into it and get it back in activity, get it back in operation again.
Yep.
That's the more important one.
I, I guess I'd like to see what we have- I, I guess I'd like to see what we have into it and what they're assessed at. I'll come in if I have to. I wanna see what we have into each of these properties and what these properties are assessed at.
But I don't want, like, say if one, they owe four thousand dollars and it's assessed at fifty, I don't wanna go out with fifty thousand dollars.
But, but I wanna see what those are, because how can I make a good decision on whether we should sell it at a certain price if I don't know what, what we're looking at?
You, you wanna recoup your investment and get out of it.
Well, exactly.
You don't wanna reject it and say, well, the thirty thousand is what it would take to cover it, but we want fifty. I wouldn't ask you to do that.
No.
But I do, I wanna see what, what it is to get out and what they're assessed at, just so I have a basis to make a decision.
I think our objective originally was to get them back on the tax rolls.
Yes.
Not make a profit here.
Yeah.
Or try to. Which I think is a waste of time. Um, the, just for discussion, Fifty, Fifty Chatterton Park sits between two nice homes. Maybe somebody could call those two and see if they'd be interested in splitting that. If it was next to my house, I'd jump on it.
Ditto that.
Is that subverting the, opening up to the public for?
Well.
Well, I think they, they would have to bid on it too, I think they would have to bid on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just wanna make sure they're aware that.
They are, they are, both of them are.
Okay.
But they, but they haven't talked about that specific way of, of splitting it up. That would not be, you know, a hard conversation to have.
So is there a, a date on these, when she's planning on putting up the tax sale?
What's that?
A date?
A date to do it?
Yeah.
As soon as you say, do it, yeah.
Because I feel like there's more on the list than just two.
Well, oh, your feed for the next go around. Yeah, Mary has sent out notices to people who are delinquent. There will be the delinquent tax in the town report. And she has not set a date for the next sale, I've been hounding her to set a date. But she's the elected tax collector and she does it.
Yeah, it'd be good to get these out as soon as we can.
Yeah, okay, town office front wall grant.
You just got a letter in there saying that as far as the state is concerned.
Yeah.
We're complete and we received a check for twenty thousand dollars today.
Nice.
There's Sharon. So that kinda puts that with the bed, with the exception that we still have work to do in the spring. To get it going.
Okay. Uh, renovations, so.
Where the grant conditions is that you adopt this municipal policies and codes for H M P dash one. Without making changes to it, just adopt it.
Motion to adopt.
Wait a minute, what do we, what, wait. We have to adopt this for, why are we adopting this?
If you want money from the state, you have to adopt it.
And this is to do with the renovations at this building, for the addition?
Or for the, just the steps?
This is, this is strictly for this building here.
Yeah.
The steps is all done.
Yeah.
We didn't have to do it for the steps because it wasn't the same program.
Yeah.
This is in this program, this is one of the things on the checklist. The other thing on the checklist is the, uh, policy for operations of the town treasurer's office.
This doesn't lock us into any long-term, you know, say we decide to go up on the other.
No, you could, you could refuse, there will, once these things are all checked off, you will get a final notice that they have approved it, subject to your signature.
Yeah.
And that's when the grant takes effect.
Okay.
So it's just a.
Formality.
Formality here.
Formality, and you can un-adopt these tomorrow if you wanted to, but right now it's on the checklist that you have to adopt it.
Yeah.
They've got the money and they say, sign here.
Yeah.
Jump through the hoop.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that really covers that construction easement.
Okay, I've talked with Casella regarding a temporary easement for construction of the addition. Uh, he hasn't said very much other than he wants to maintain the ability to access their building during construction. So we'd have to leave at least a twelve foot lane up along their side.
That seems fair.
Yeah, I've talked with Alan George as to what is needed to write up a lease, or an easement, and he's got no problem, he's just looking for my sketch.
Yeah.
And I'm looking to N B F for a sketch.
Junk vehicles. Twenty-two terror show.
I need to have motions on fourteen Kane Street and thirteen thirty-six West Street, because those were two of the ones where the sheriff gave us the wrong address.
Yeah.
We got notified that these people did not have junk vehicles on their property, where we sent, where we sent them out, so this was starting to game over with them. So if I have motions on both of those, I will send them letters.
Can I make a motion?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Town meeting warning.
We have got more advice on this than.
Yes.
Than necessary.
Yes.
I put some more stuff on your desk tonight, just so you have something to read before you went to bed.
Yeah.
And I, I think they're well reading, but.
Yeah.
We gotta move forward here and we'll be dealing with this next town meeting.
I've got the wording here for signature, if you're happy with it.
Our lawyer approved it.
This is the wording he suggested in his memorandum.
Yeah, so.
And then that's been corrected too, once or twice, so.
Yes.
I dare say we're pretty close to it. Correct?
Motion to approve the warning.
Make a motion if you're willing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ah, the cover.
I hate to bother you with this, I could have made an executive decision, but I decided not to. This is the same picture taken at a different evening, with the light off the flag taken out of it, so it didn't have the star in the middle of it. And we turned the lights on on the inside so that it looked like it was being used.
Yeah.
So the question is whether black and white or color, and it's two hundred and fifty dollars for the color.
Black and white, Charlie.
I was gonna say, black and white is.
Okay.
They end up in, yeah, well, they end up in like garbage.
I, I would have, if, if I had the decision, or hadn't come to you and asked for a decision, it had been color.
Well.
It's warmer.
It is, it, it's a much nicer picture, but.
I know.
I don't think people spend a lot of time looking at the color.
It's just they used to be, they used to be black and white, and we got into the color business here about six years ago.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do black and white then.
Yeah.
Fine, I'll make.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Select board report.
I put a new addition on it, and I need to apologize to Lisa for not reading the whole email before I answered her back. But essentially, the, thanks to the library for providing the space is, is what is in here.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't think of that either, so.
Are there other, I, I did all the corrections.
Got all my changes.
I mean, all those changes.
Yes, thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, so, that.
Motion to approve revise select board report.
All in favor?
Wait, you didn't get a second, I'll second it. I'm like, wait, you didn't get a second?
One thing, tomorrow I'm putting the town report on Syria's desk for proofreading.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
It's all done, with the exception, she's gotta provide me with some numbers that goes on to the grand list page and the breakdown of the tax rate to various items. And she'll be in tomorrow, and she did it before when we set the tax rate, now I gotta get them back in to make sure they're the same ones that she told us that. But other than that's done, she's gonna proofread it all and also look at formatting. I could ask a simple question, on the report of the select board, do you like it centered underlined, or would you like it on the left-hand side with no underline?
Whatever.
I, I'll give you some tough decisions.
Yeah, yeah.
It's ba- it's, is it stapled or bound?
The town report?
I can't remember, yeah.
Yeah.
It's bound.
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 Yeah.
Did we get a cost on the smaller version?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
It off with five hundred and fifty dollars.
Cheaper?
Cheaper, by cutting out the audit.
Yeah.
The two hundred and fifty dollars is cutting out the.
Color.
Cover.
And the size is the same?
Yeah, eight by eleven.
And we didn't go to a smaller size, we stated the larger size.
Well, it's too late to make a decision on.
Yeah.
Right, we're clarifying the question.
Next year you can instruct the town manager to make it nine by six and eight font.
If it's not centered, then if it's like to the, to the left, then it's probably put more on, get more on a page.
A million years.
If you did a one, one inch margin all the way around.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm putting in a fourteen font for the heading and tried to put in a twelve font for the reports backing off to an eleven font on some of them. That makes it so I could read it. And again, one page per report. Yeah, the accessory gets two pages because she puts in the property sales for last year. What was sold and what the appraisal was. And there's a second page of the library report with their, with their budget. But everything else is one page. And one page for the audit. And there's only one page for the school.
Wow.
So the one page that goes in, so we, so we take it out about fourteen pages right there.
Yeah.
So the, the final price is gonna be considered, unless it's the quoted price that I gave you.
All right.
You'd like your hand.
Yeah. Okay, town manager search, we didn't get anything from any breakdown, uh, supposed costs or anything from. Of what the additional cost might be.
Yes, there is additional on the last, page six.
She's got her price for her tire, but on top of that is advertising.
Yeah.
Yeah, she doesn't have a, she has, well, point fifty-five cents a mile for anything, and then materials fifteen percent cost plus.
I believe that's standard fifty-five.
Oh, yeah, that, that part of it, yeah.
I think she's included it in her six initial, but if we needed her to come back again, then it would be.
Additional.
I think that's it.
Yeah.
I was impressed, I liked her attitude.
So, when do we wanna, when do we wanna schedule?
What is to accept her, her agreement?
Huh?
What is to accept her agreement?
Yeah, yeah.
There is to have her start working on it.
Okay.
She said the first of February, she'd be ready to start.
All right.
So, we're gonna start Saturday though. Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye, and then we'll just set up something to have her come in and meet with us to go over.
Yeah, some night to come in.
Okay.
What I would suggest to her is, one is to come up with what she sees for an ad and a job description, and then meet with the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you got something to hash out.
Right, right.
So what's a better night for everybody?
We should send her something as far as job description to work off, so she can come up with a better job description.
I, I sent her the William Stoud job description, I sent her the Bethel job description, I sent her the statute reference.
Perfect.
And I sent her the words out of my contract, which are, which are very minimal.
Right.
And I think the league has a bunch too that she could tap into if she had to, or I could get them from.
The question is gonna be the qualifications, what you're looking for. Whether you're gonna have to have a PhD in municipal management in order to apply for the job. Uh, or equivalent, eighth grade education.
There you go.
Play baseball.
What's the best night for everybody?
Depends on the date.
Exactly, depends on the day.
Are you looking into February, right, like the first week of February, second?
Yeah, yeah, we gotta get going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who's got a calendar?
Yeah.
Tuesdays are fine with me, on Monday. Maybe a Tuesday, I don't know. Although we have committee meetings usually.
So, the fourth is a Tuesday?
Yeah.
We don't have a meeting on the third, it would be on the tenth.
Yeah, so you wanna go with the fourth?
Sure.
If she's available.
Tuesday, the fourth.
What time?
Five thirty?
Five thirty?
Sorry.
Yep.
If that's.
Um, and somebody will email Ben about that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As soon as I email her and she responds, then I will email back to you people.
Tuesday, the fourth at five thirty.
Five thirty, tentative.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, what would be another date if she came or?
The fifth?
Wednesday, the fifth, does that work for you?
Don't you have, isn't there Beaver Pond meeting in this room?
Well, I think this would.
On Wednesday, the fifth, there's a Beaver Pond committee meeting.
How about the sixth?
Sixth, that would work for me.
Five thirty? Okay. Yeah, we can't waste any more time, we gotta get going.
Get going. Remind me, Bruce, I got a form of signature pages here, and I gotta add this one to it.
Yeah. Okay, uh, any questions or what have you on the budget packet that was in the?
I got a budget packet.
Huh? It was there.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
I didn't remember seeing your budget packet.
You didn't get one?
Huh?
I don't think I have any questions, is it like pretty much the same as last?
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
They don't change much from work to week to week.
Right, I mean, we just had it, like, two weeks ago I looked at it.
Yeah, I don't get nervous till springtime.
No.
I don't get nervous unless these are really big, these red ones.
So.
I'm good.
Okay.
They're gonna move.
Yes.
Sheriff's Department?
So, I called the sheriff's department on Thursday morning and asked to have, uh, but our, call me back, he is, uh, Friday morning. He has yet to call me back. Twice last week, at six thirty in the morning, somebody almost hit me on Route Three, going seventy miles an hour, head on. So I think we got a problem and I.
Whereabouts on Route Three?
Um, it's in the fifty mile an hour.
In Proctor?
He's coming this way, you're gonna help?
Yes. Yes, twice. Um, Friday was really close, like, I had to.
Same person?
No. So, and the other one, they were so close behind me, I couldn't even see their taillights, and, and going the speed limit. So I did call him and I did not get a response back. So I, I, I wasn't, I'm not too excited about that, because I just wanted to touch base with him about it. You know, obviously he ain't do anything about it, it's already happened. My other question is, I thought we had talked to him about these little three quarters of an hour kinds of charges. What is the point of three quarters of an hour?
What is the point of three-quarters of an hour?
Or which ones?
Um, if you look on page one, the first page...
No?
There's what, three-quarters of an hour? And...
Yes.
Then there's another one, but I let that fly because it was paperwork involved.
Lisa, do you know what a 290 is?
You know what I mean?
You know, here's another one, a half an hour. I, I'm...
Oh, I bet that is the issue that Stan and I spoke about.
Not the right date?
Yeah. That was the issue with a Proctor resident involving schoolchildren, and Stan spoke, and he went up and spoke. So that's a issue.
Is it perhaps somebody that I have the same issue with, with my son and walking home?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what happened.
But I'm not going to, you know, I don't think we should micromanage them with...
Well, it's not about micromanaging. This is about, we pay a lot of money and what is the point of a quarter of an hour and a half an hour? What do you accomplish in town for that amount of time?
If someone else is in town, other than her.
Yeah.
Or him. So she was there for 40, they were there for 45 minutes talking with him, probably because somebody else was doing something, and then another officer came in that same day. So there's, Kara Cummings was here already.
From 12:30 to 2 o'clock. This is 12 o'clock to 12:45.
Right. So you're saying because it's a different officer?
Yeah, why, right, it's a different officer. She's here in the middle of it and he's...
Unless they have a certain officer that deals with...
Yes.
Juvenile or whatever.
That's the one I can think of because it's my understanding he's a higher-ranking officer.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm not sure that each rank is for each person.
But I know they, their department has certain people designated as assignments, depending on the level or whatever they...
But that was the one that we, you know...
So, and then my other question is, didn't he send something about, now, I don't have a problem with the sex offender registry. My problem with it is, don't they get paid through contract for that and then it's in our time? Didn't he say that it would be taken off and here it is again?
I believe he did.
And he did say that, that's double-dipping.
Police function to check it out.
Right, but they get, they get paid already for that, I'm pretty sure. So that's called double-dipping.
They do get paid? Huh? Sure?
I thought some state agency paid them to go around and check. Department of Corrections or something. His email, I believe, said...
Exactly.
I know when we have something served by the sheriff, it's additional cost.
Well, you have a police force.
Right, but when we, but the sheriff...
Well, that's your police service.
Sometimes they will with something, just because of conflict. So, but they have a specific one who just does, like, do that, so.
So the question we spark back to the sheriff is, are you getting paid by someone else to do the sex registry check?
Correct, because he also said in his email, I'm pretty sure, back to us when we questioned this before, that he was taking it off our time and it showed up again.
I read the email.
That was the maintenance that he took off.
Yeah.
I believe it was the maintenance and the...
I'm pretty sure.
I think he said that he was taking the sex registry off.
Would you mind double-check?
And here it is again, here.
I think the sex registry was, he did not take that off your invoice. He took off the maintenance item.
Maintenance.
Well, I guess I want to look into, then I'll look into that, whether they're getting paid somewhere else and we're paying them too.
That's what I got a question mark written down. I'll take his email, send it back to him and say, "Do you get paid by somebody else to do this?" And who does it in Tibuthen?
Yeah.
Well, the sheriff's department in Tibuthen, so...
So this letter from Kate Warner, we're just going to file as received.
Would it be worth, you know, she seems like a nice person, but, you know, unless they come up with some money here, an offer, you know, should we email her back and say, "Give us an offer," you know, or otherwise we're not...
Well, we don't know whether we're going to sell it or not.
We don't, but, I mean, she's beating around the bush every time she talks to us.
Yeah, but we're not going to change the warning.
I would just say, thank you for your input. We've made the changes.
Yeah, and the same with the letter and packet from...
Yeah, no, no, I don't want to change the warning or, you know, some options.
Or culture and what have you, so it was on the table.
No, I don't, she's, not changing the warning, but, you know, she's telling us she's not going to pay us, but...
Okay.
They've been offered.
Anything else tonight?
I don't have a lot to say.
Have nothing.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.